So you can see the capital project totals and then the revenue sources above. Then we go into the actual projects themselves. And Tom is here, the Utilities Director, to answer any questions that you have. This, as you'll recall, is what you set up as the level of projects that we would cover from current revenues because they reoccur every year. The next slide.
Does that seem to be covering our need? Does that seem sufficient? We see water all over the streets at the major intersection. We get a little nervous.
For the record, Tom Jackson, Utilities Director. Yes, it does. And Sharon and finance staff, we talk about this subject almost monthly to make sure that we do, that we're, it's not too high and it's not too low, it's just right. Yes, it does.
Sounds like a commercial.
And again, we consider that the minimum, not the highest, greatest maximum that we could do. So then, the very first project that you see under the second list is the pipe replacement project. So this is the wastewater, I'm sorry, you'll have to help me with this one.
As you will recall, about a year ago, a little over a year ago, we had the failure in the leak at the wastewater treatment plant of the transfer piping between the treatment process tanks. This is to replace that, which we're actually going out, City Council, I believe, in the last meeting approved the design contract for, to complete the design for the replacement of that piping, and that's what that project is.
Thank you, Tom. The reason why I'm pointing that one out to you is if you look at the list above, the minimum that we want to pay from operating revenues, the last project on there is the wastewater treatment plant pipe replacement project, and then right above it is the wastewater force main. So we had said we would like $350,000 annually for force main projects. Since this event, we've kind of changed our minds and we really want, we would really like to have 500,000. But because the policy was so new, we left just the 350 up here, but we identified in 15 of that 350, 150 is going towards this special project, leaving only 200,000 left for projects as are identified and occurred during the year. And then, Kristin, if we can go to the next page. So now you see the rest of that project, the wastewater treatment plant pipe project. That's the balance of the project, that 1,350. Okay? So the rest of it was up in our cash funded. And then the next line, which is the wastewater force main renewal replacement projects, in the out years, you see 150. Eventually, we will probably say to you, we'd like to take that 150 and move it above the line. And so the 1,120 will become 1,270. So we are always analyzing this number for you. We didn't want to react too quickly. This is sort of based on new information that we believe, that we've identified a weakness in the system that should be dealt with annually. So it's evolving. The rest of the projects on this page, if you see any questions about any of them, Tom will be happy to cover them with you. These are, a lot of these you saw last year.
Carolyn has a question.
Not a question. It just always amazes me when we look at what we have to do in terms of our water, our water treatment plant, et cetera. It is just such a massive enterprise for our city, and I just want to thank our staff and our finance department for making it all happen. Thank you.
Sharon and Dave make the magic happen. I just tell them what I need.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for, I guess it's Tom.
Tom.
One of the constituent homeowner associations in my district, Eagle Point, has relined their sewer system. I think that should help cut down on their costs.
With the INI a good bit, yes.
Is there any of that activity going on within our own system?
Absolutely. When you see the smoke testing or see in the information sharing about smoke testing, what we're doing is identifying problem areas. And then we have two courses of action. We actually set aside $300,000 a year to repair, that's part of that R and R money, to repair lines that could be taking water in or leaking water out. We identify them first, and then we will either, depending on the location or the size of the pipe, turn it over to our contractor, and we fund that every year, or we'll do it with our own forces. We took on about five or six years ago, sent some folks to school to do small diameter pipe lining, and they're very good at it. So yes, we do that almost daily. We're looking at that.
Just a clarification, Tom, you mentioned water in, water out, the same type of testing pertains to both?
What they're doing is looking for potential leaks.
Okay, not using a smoke, they're using a smoke test on both water in?
Yes. Yeah, if you have a leak in a pipe, it can let water out, depending on where it is, or let water in, depending on where it is. If it's a gravity line and the hole's in the top, it's going to let water in. If it's in the bottom, it's going to let water out.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And then, these are the final projects. As we've said already, in your detail packet, you do have the full RO project, but in the summary here, we've omitted years, '17, '18, and '19 until we are ready to present that. And then, the last thing we wanted to bring up, and again, this is very important, and you'll notice that the number's considerably higher than what you saw in the general fund. We previously had established a $350,000 annual replacement program for the four divisions within utilities. They've since evaluated and feel a little more comfortable with 400, and in 2015, it's actually 421. We'll bring probably back a little bit higher number to you next year. I think it's important that we continually evaluate what's going on with the pumps, the valves, and the equipment out at the plants. It's a substantial amount of infrastructure that, obviously, if we do preventative care, it's much better than an emergency middle-of-the-night repair. So that's what we're attempting to do for you in that area.
Tom?
I have a question of Tom. Do we, do we just replace the bad pumps, or do we rebuild them?
Yes, both. Depending on the size, Bobby Legg, the wastewater collection division, we actually have a pump shop, and they're some of the best pump mechanics in the world. We will pull pumps out of lift stations and pumping stations, completely rebuild them. We'll do new volutes, new staters, new starters, put them on the shelf, and then recycle them back through.
Terrific.
Now, we also, as a city, own some 250 horsepower vertical turbine pumps, which are some of the largest pumps in the world. Those we cannot rebuild. We don't have the capacity to do that. And one of those pumps is $200,000 if it fails. And the original casings on those pumps date from the 1980s. We've had our contractor rebuild them so many times. So yes, we do, either with a contractor or with our forces, rebuild them.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
Did everybody catch what our Utilities Director said?
There will be a test.
Our employees, not only are they the best in Florida, and the best in the country, they're the best in the world.
The best in the world.
Possibly, possibly the universe.
Universe.
Gotta love it.
So I'd like, one more question, the best of the world. I just happened to think about it. Back to the smoke testing that you mentioned, our water table is so high, is it possible that some of our lines may be below the water table so that smoke testing really doesn't show anything?
Yes. That's always a potential issue in Florida. But we can usually identify those, because we know the elevation when they were constructed, we know the water table elevation, and we know how the smoke will react in a blocked line. But yeah, that's always a problem in Florida, especially along the coast. And some of these gravity lines were done 40, 50 years ago, when the building code was different, the standards were different, the materials were different. So yeah, we've seen that.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Tom or Sharon?
That concludes...
So do you need anything with this item on the end here, the fleet replacement, or we just, for information purposes?
It's just information purposes, thank you.
And I think that's a common theme throughout every department that we have here in the city, trying to play catch-up in a major way, so...
Yes, yes. And hopefully, we believe that we've caught this one at the appropriate time. I mean, we've done some serious shifting of money just this year to enable them to deal with some pump problems. So I mean, the last, obviously, the water flowing is so important, so yes, we've dealt with it, we believe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just did want to say thank you, and in reading this, I think you did catch this. It's such a great time, and everything seems to flow so well. You do really such a good job at this.
Well, we'll remember that when there's a time when we don't catch it at the right time.
You know, it happens sometimes.
It does happen.
But you do pretty good. You do pretty good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute, five-minute break, so we will reconvene at 10:15. It'll be a six-minute.
Thank you.
It is 10:15, and we are back in order, and we have no unfinished business, and we will move into new business, which the only item is update on traffic signal maintenance agreement with FDOT, which is really an interesting topic, and the media's leaving, right?
Don't wait, don't wait, it's really interesting.
Yes, yes, we'll hear.
I'm here.
Oh, Brenda's here.
Good morning, Mark Garing, Public Works. Usually this time of year, we're bringing a traffic signal maintenance agreement to the council for signature. That's where FDOT reimburses us for taking care of the traffic signals on the state roads. Since 2002, we've been operating under an agreement that staff was comfortable with. We've learned to live with it. We knew what we were getting paid for, what we weren't getting paid for. In 2009, that agreement was updated, just to include the newly-installed ATMS, all, I forget the acronym, the traffic cameras that were installed to watch the traffic. The joke for the acronym is "all traffic must stop." The ATMS system. So that agreement went through in 2009, and we've been operating since with no problems. This year, FDOT drafted a new agreement in about January and sent it out, and every agency within the state had major issues with that. Over the next few months, they had a few roundtables and webinars and whatever, and came up with a revised agreement that still didn't meet what we were looking for. The new agreement states that DOT can require us to replace equipment that they feel is outdated or obsolete, and it also can require, can allow them to tell us we have to paint our traffic signal poles, which cost about 50 grand per intersection. In verbal discussions with FDOT, they say there's no change. Everything is just the same way it's always been, but for some reason, they feel it's necessary to put this into their language. It sounds kind of like a used car salesman to me. So we're still in discussions with FDOT. Charlotte County, who is, with an interlocal, is responsible for actually doing our maintenance, is taking this issue to their Board of County Commissioners next week. So we wanted to bring it to you and let you know that what we're doing is basically waiting to see what happens with Charlotte County. DOT is actually coming to the County Board of County Commissioners meeting to explain their situation. So we will come back to City Council if it's not resolved to explain and get direction as to where we want to go. We just want to make you aware of that.
What would the purpose of painting the poles be, and why are they moving in that direction? Do you have any idea?
Well, the city of Punta Gorda, all of our masked arms traffic signal poles are painted. They were painted to begin with. Charlotte County only has a couple of painted intersections. DOT has found that it's very expensive to paint them and trying to...
Shift the cars.
Move that burden onto somebody else. So we have as many, in our city system, we have as many painted poles as Charlotte County. So if Charlotte County has it as an issue that they may get hit with it, I think a half a million dollars if they wanted them all painted, we would get that same bill too as well. So we're going to, you know, look out for the city's interest and see where this goes.
Is there also an issue with obsolete equipment out there that you feel like they're targeting to change out, or...
No, in the past, anything, anytime, anything that has become obsolete, DOT furnishes us with that equipment. We usually pay to install it, and we're glad to have new equipment. But just the language in the contract, again, verbally, they tell us that nothing's changed. They're still going to do everything that they do, but the language in the contract doesn't say that.
Questions for Mark? I guess we'll revisit this July meeting, one of the two.
Yeah, the deadline for the agreement, our current agreement expires June 30th, so they were looking for it to be signed and returned to them by June 13.
If it's not signed by that time?
DOT has not been able to give us an answer on that.
Does this come up at the NPO meetings at all?
I haven't, we have not had this issue come up with NPO. I'm surprised that it hasn't, but it may be the next step with FDOT.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we move into recommendations from city officers. Howard?
Next Tuesday is Swift Mudd Board Meeting in Brooksville. That's where they do the budget, and that's our last stand. So our lobbyist is doing his thing with the board members. I do not have an update yet, hopefully by the end of the week. We need to plan on going early Tuesday morning to Brooksville. It's about two and a half hours. We should leave here quarter six. Everybody on board?
Yep.
Yes.
Open Adam.
We don't know what kind of presentation we will make. We will know that hopefully by the end of the week, because I'll talk to the lobbyist. I doubt if they want to hear us do another one of our full-blown presentations.
But it would be nice to have Jerry provide us with whatever he recommends that we do present. The other thing that I found, I thought worked very well the last time we did the presentation was to have the slides, so that they not only heard the issue, but they saw it. You know, they saw the bullet points. So he might be helpful either in identifying the bullet points, and we do the slides, or however he wants to work it, but I think that that might be helpful if, depending on the issues.
He will advise us.
Yes, and I think we should heed his advice.
Yes, absolutely.
If, if he comes back, the best scenario is he comes back and he says, "We don't have to do any presentation whatsoever."
That would be very nice.
That's Nirvana.
That would be great.
We could just say, "Thank you."
And I think if we do then have representation, then we should have the mayor represent us as a group to try to keep it crisp and to the point.
We will, yeah, well, by the end of the week, he'll let us know what we need to do. But quarter or six Tuesday morning downstairs?
I might need to wake up.
We'll have our caravan ready to go. Oh, I know it's not on here, but we did get a last-minute item that I'll put in the weekly report regarding flood insurance and the premium renewals. We want to alert everybody that even though you may be homesteaded, you still need to prove to FEMA that you're homesteaded. So your insurance agent needs to be aware of that, you need to be aware of that, because you'll probably get a letter from FEMA saying you just need to prove it. And that's a new wrinkle now, and...
And the way that you prove it is?
Oh, there's a number of ways. Motorized registration, driver's license. You know, I don't know why FEMA just can't get on the property appraisers file, property trial, look up your address and see that you're homesteaded, but they don't do that anymore. They're making you prove it. So your agent will help you with that. But I'll put it in the weekly report, everybody should be able to do that.
I'll just add, I've already gotten my flood insurance, and no one's asked me for that yet. And also, I got the insurance for the Bank of America, which I really expected to go up significantly, a couple hundred bucks.
On your flood insurance? The flood insurance on our house went up 25%.
Wow.
That's terrific.
Well, again, that's because FEMA assumed that the house was non-homesteaded. We had to prove it to them that we're homesteaded. We did, and then it went right back down.
So it was a pretty expedient process, once you proved it?
Yeah, but you got to prove it.
Yes.
So it was fine, once we proved it.
And the genesis of the letter said we were charging you the 25% because you're not homesteaded?
No, I don't recall ever getting a letter.
So you said from this information, people will be getting letters, or...
They will be, supposedly.
Maybe they're just billing and then putting the onus on the property owner to fight it?
According to the county's, the county's consultant, we should have been getting letters. If I did get one, I probably thought it was some advertisement and threw it away, especially. Shouldn't have done it, if I got one. But we're just going to have it in the weekly report. Alert everybody, be aware of it. If you're homesteaded, don't accept that increase if they give it to you. Be hard to your agent and deal with it, and like we did, we'll get a refund.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope. Remember, the first meeting in July, we will be talking about the general fund budget. We'll give a presentation, get you ready for the adoption of the tentative mileage rate the second meeting in July.
Next, we have City Attorney.
Actually, this Friday, there's going to be a lot of real estate agents in town.
Yes.
District 13 of the state Board of Realtors, I guess it is, is having their convention. I'll be speaking on waterfront property issues, so if you want to sneak in, I'll save a seat for you to back across at the events center.
On Friday, at what time?
I'm speaking at 1:30. It's going on all day.
I think I'm welcoming at noon time, so that must, might be the...
Yeah, make sure you warm up the crowd for me.
Okay.
That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you. City Clerk.
Okay, under vacancies, we continue to have our alternate seats on historic preservation, code enforcement, and the building board. Thought what I would do is include something on their agendas and ask their members if they know of someone who could, who might be going to serve.
Have they had any issues with quorums or anything because of the vacancies?
We just had Jason Green, who had to appeal. I'm glad you approved that, so that we can keep him on the board on historic preservation. But other than that, no issues with quorums for those boards. Okay, and then, we have no nominations this time, under appointments. We have one three-year term on the building board. Here are the voting forums. Here, voting for one, please.
So, let me ask this after we do this. Do you think the others that are interested in this building board seat would possibly become an alternate, if, you know, the other, if they're not selected, because we still need an alternate seat on the building board?
I believe that Mr. McClary is not interested in an alternate seat. Jeff Masters is already an alternate. He's looking to move up. And Mr. Quack, we can contact him and ask him if he'd be interested in the alternate seat.
Okay, that would be good.
And Mr. Fulham is the appointee.
Okay, we also have appointments for the Punta Gorda Housing Authority, four interested parties, and one seat, so please vote for one. Okay, and finally, under appointments for the planning commission, we actually have two seats that should not say planning commission alternate on the voting forum. I apologize for that. You'll be voting for two. We have four interested parties. But these are two regular seats, not alternate seats.
We need a runoff between James McClary and Ronald Baxter. And the appointee is Mr. Baxter.
Okay, thank you. Under policy and legislation, I have an item. I attended a meeting at the Justice Center on Monday, which was the space study committee, which has been meeting. We were provided a timeline when we went on our tours that Howard has available. The Justice Center had undertaken, this county had undertaken a space study by Dan Wiley and Associates, and there is a need for expansion of the Justice Center. It has been added on to the 1% sales tax list for the eight-year extension, and the committee is going about working to get the information out there in the public, which would include some information to be uploaded. which would include, um, some information to be uploaded soon on the county's website. They're also doing tours. I think all of us have been on the tour.
I haven't.
You haven't yet? You're going, are you going this week?
Not this week, but...
Okay, well, you're gonna, you're gonna go.
Yep, I'm gonna go.
They've done other tours with other, um, community, people interested in the community. Uh, I believe Judge Allison Droni is on the Ken Lovejoy Show this morning, uh, speaking on the topic. And, um, they were trying to get some, you know, talking points together for, for the public. And they will be doing a full-out presentation. Dan Wiley, the consultant, will be at the July 22nd Board of County Commissioners meeting to give the full-blown presentation of the Justice Center, of the expansion, the reasons for the expansion, um, the details of all the space that's existing in there, and, and all the options that have been explored with the study that he did. So, um, that's upcoming. And they are moving forward with trying to figure out a way to relocate the archives in the, in the, um...
Courts.
What do they call that thing?
Building B.
Building B?
It's down, it's downstairs.
It's actually the, the ground floor of Building B where the Quirk of Courts offices are.
There's a big archive area, but it is not, there's no ceiling, there's no air conditioning. It's not, it's not like the state's attorney's office could just move in there anytime soon. It needs to be majorly retrofitted for that purpose, and so, um, that is part of the plan. So, at the Board of County Commission meeting on July 22nd, you will get the full-blown presentation from Dan Wiley explaining all of, um, the details on the expansion, and that it is a county obligation, and it will be needed in the next... It's basically needed, parts of it are needed now, like the, the attorney's offices and the public defender, they're completely out of space. The clerk does have some openings, um, in her area, because she did have to downsize her staff over the economic downturn. But her area is more of an open area, and the attorneys need offices due to confidentiality and other issues that they have to deal with. So, um, it's not like the state's attorney's office or the public defender could go really over into the clerk's area without any kind of other, uh, construction. So they're facing a lot of, a lot of, um, specific space needs. And one thing that we, uh, we saw in our tour, you could see if you agree, is that the technology and the security. It's, it's easy to say, well, find a building offsite somewhere where they can move to. They need, they're going paperless, so with that comes extra technology, extra servers, extra space, extra redundancy within their systems. So they have invested heavily in all these systems that they have in that building. So all of that would have to be duplicated if they moved to a different site, or, say, one department, say, the public defenders department. And they've also, in the study, they've also, um, they have a tiered system of if people were to have to move out of the Justice Center, who would go first and who would go second. And that is not being recommended, but they do have a plan for that. So the technology is there, and also the security. All of those offices that, um, are in there are within the security envelope of the building, and that would have to be duplicated at an offsite space. So it's not something that's really, um, easy to do, but they are exploring all the options, and the presentation will be on July 22nd. So that was interesting, yes.
One of the things that I suggested when I had my tour was that, um, I guess the comment I made, and then I made a suggestion, was the fact that most of the electorate has no idea what goes on in that building. Um, you know, we are not the ones that are typically there. Um, I've gotten to go through that because I was, um, involved in Leadership Charlotte Government Day, so I'd been exposed to it. But most of the, the people that see that building are people who've done something wrong, and for the most part, unless you've been there for jury duty. So we don't really know what goes on, and I encourage them to also develop a schedule of, of public tours, to really try to help the electorate understand what goes on in that building, and so that people can see firsthand how, how, the condition that they're working in. Because once you see it, then you go, oh, okay, I can, I can appreciate everything that's been done over the years to actually help extend the life of the building of where they are. So, I mean, they really have taken advantage of nooks and crannies, so to speak. And, and it's a, it's a marketing effort to the public, so, um, I don't know if anyone else has made that suggestion, but I'm gonna try to reach out to, um, them again, just to say, you know, please keep that up. Because I've suggested that, that idea to a number of residents, and they said, yes, I'd love to go see it. So I think that would be...
I think they're open to that, sure. And one of the, um, topics of the conversation is that the sales tax is shared by visitors and people, you know, um, visitors, short-term and long-term visitors, whereas the, on Government Day, it was interesting this last week, when Leadership Charlotte came through there, there were four first appearances, and none of them lived in Charlotte County. So to solely put the cost of the Justice Center on the backs of all the property owners, is, is that, that's a, you know, a policy decision, and, and, you know, a, um, a decision for people to make, because they're really not the ones using the building. It's visitors and anybody who enters into Charlotte County that, you know, gets in trouble or needs services that they, that they provide there. So, Carolyn?
I think one of the things that our residents don't understand, and I, you know, even I didn't realize, is that Charlotte County has a constitutional responsibility to pay for the space. The state will pay for the employees.
Salaries.
The salaries, but the, uh, county has, has to pay for the space. So one way or another, we are going to be paying for any expansion. And I would agree with you in terms of the issues related to security. Um, you know, you don't realize, our public defenders, um, are in precarious situations, uh, very often. And, you know, I might be looking at the space a little bit differently, but I think they've, they've made a good case. One of the things that I'm concerned about, maybe Tom wants to pipe in first.
Well, uh, why don't you continue?
Well, one of the things that I'm concerned about is that I've been getting, again, the feedback that probably most of us have been getting, is that our residents are saying, ah, not gonna, I'm not gonna approve that 1% sales tax because of the Justice Center. You know, we, that shouldn't be included, it shouldn't be eight years, it should only be six years, it shouldn't, and should include the Justice Center. And what I'm concerned about is if we don't have that 1% sales tax for Punta Gorda, we're not gonna be able to move forward on so many different projects. So what I was wondering is whether or not, as a city, that we should invite a presentation here at City Council and have that open, and then be able to provide additional information then to our residents through our weekly reports and things like that. We, it would also be, obviously, on our program for that particular city council meeting. And then invite, you know, our residents to come and hear firsthand and ask questions. It, I mean, it's too important to us, and it will be going on the sales tax, I'm sure.
I think that's an excellent idea, I think that we should pursue that. I share the mayor's observations with regard to the Justice Center and with regard to their space needs. Having served on the, uh, the county's 1% focus group, we were not provided the information on the Justice Center that the commissioners received. We were giving, given an executive summary, and not a lot of time was spent on it. Had, had we been given the information that the commissioners received, I am very confident that we would have come out with a recommendation to the county commissioners that money be appropriated out of the sales tax to expand the Justice Center, as we did with the, uh, the jail. I mean, we, they, they were initially looking for $35 million. We listened to the presentation, we recommended to the commission that they, they expand at least the infirmary, and, and that made, made the list. So I, I fully recognize the needs of the expanse of the, uh, the justice system, and I, and Carolyn's suggestion to have them here, I think is a really good start to, to get the information out there.
I was, I, I think that's an excellent suggestion, to have, have that on an agenda here. And I wonder how difficult it would be, Dave, to, um, all of the things that we have on our list that are needs of the city, remembering there's a lot of needs on the county's list also. Um, what would our budget look like if the 1% sales tax does not pass? Because we have a lot of wants, and we could do without those, but there's also a lot of needs on that list that we will have to have, no matter what. And so that will go on the backs of the property owners, not on the 1%.
Shared with the visitors.
Not shared with visitors, you know, 30% of it is visitors, so I don't know how...
We could put that together.
Okay.
And it's interesting, at Florida League of Cities, um, one of the more tourist, uh, concentrated areas down in Lee County, uh, the mayor is going to Florida League of Cities Conference with, um, an idea for municipalities to be able to put a sales tax referendum on their own, without having to have the county take the lead on it, as a way to pay for interest, infrastructure, um, and share with the visitors. Because the, the city that I'm referring to is heavily seasonal and, and, and based on a lot of visitors, and not, you know, the property owners feel, feel the burden of all the infrastructure that they need. And so cities are, are trying to, um, gonna see if this, they briefly discussed it last year, but see if they can move it forward and possibly get it on the legislative agenda for, for, um, next year.
That's very interesting, and in my opinion, very appropriate. It was, the question was asked during one of our groups, that why doesn't, I, I think it's Sarasota County, and Lee County, or Sarasota has it, Lee County does not. And there, and the reason that Lee County does not is because they have so many cities in Lee County. So I think it's very appropriate for that movement, to hope it moves forward.
Yes, so the county itself would get very little...
There's no incentive for the county to, uh, support the sales tax.
I agree. I, that's, that would be a great idea. It, and, and is it possible, or even feasible, to be able to do it just during the winter months? I mean, just ask it.
That's stretching it.
Why? If you can think it, it can be done.
Um, that's all I have.
I, I have an update on, on the cut, when it's appropriate.
Yes, why don't you, go ahead.
Okay. During our last discussion concerning the cut at Alligator Creek, in an abundance of caution, we created a requirement that the entirety of the property where the cut was to go to should be turned over to the city. Bucky McQueen has declined to comply with those wishes. He maintains his original position, and that is to furnish the city in easement for whatever property, wherever it is required to accommodate the cut. Since, since that time, we have learned of a contract, an amount of $8,000, between a boater's alliance and Hans Wilson, a marine engineer and environmental consultant, who is also the president of the Marine Industry Association. Uh, he has been commissioned to provide a cost and feasibility study of the cut. We have also learned some, that, that there are some very significant funding opportunities for the project. Yesterday, Herman Novak, our rep with, with MAC, and Hans Wilson and I attended a meeting with Mr. Andy Stevens. He's the county director of Parks and Natural Resources. He explained not only the funding opportunities that might be available, but also, uh, opportunities for maintenance if the project, when and if the project ever gets built. And I, Herman Novak is here, and I'd like him to explain to us some of those funding opportunities that may be available. He's much more familiar with the process than I am. Thank you, Herman.
Yeah, thanks very much. A couple different funding sources have been identified as a possibility. And these are with the WCIND. This is, this is not MAC funds, this is WCIND funds.
Which is?
West Coast Inland Navigation District.
Thank you.
Yes.
But isn't that something that the MAC administers?
We administer a portion of the funds. They have other funds that they use for larger projects and projects that, uh, are not appropriate for MAC. MAC has limits on, um, what we can use the funds for. Typically, MAC gets about a million dollars a year to issue in grants. Punta Gorda this past year received $200,000 for the dredging of Ponce Inlet, uh, $10,000 for a new police motor, and what was the third one? $10,000 for something else. I don't remember, but we did, we did pretty good at MAC this year. Um, half of the MAC funds are WCIND funds, which come from the citizens of the county's property taxes. There's a line item on your property tax bill, it's four or five dollars per homeowner. The other half of the funding comes from boater improvement funds, and those are, are based on how many boats are, are registered and licensed in the county. So tho, those are the MAC funds, and none of the MAC funds appear to be appropriate for this project, but other, uh, WCIND funds. For example, WCIND has a fund called CNIF. Now, what that fund is, is if a WCIND-funded project does not occur during a three-year period, those funds are removed from the project, and they go into the CNIF fund. The CNIF fund is primarily used for navigation and navigation improvements. So Andy Stevens, our representative at the county, who is, uh, very well-versed in what funds are available for what projects. He attends the WCIND meetings with Commissioner Deutsch.
So who is the WCIND board? Who administers those, those other funds?
Uh, the West Coast Inland Navigation District has, there's a board.
Okay.
That meets quarterly on, on various funding for various projects throughout southwest Florida. This is a multi-county, uh, organization. So Andy has identified the potential for the CNIF funds, and then two other funds that WCIND administers. One is a regional fund, and one is a regional waterway management fund. I don't know a lot about each of those funds yet, uh, but our, our expert at the county yesterday came up with the idea that funds may be available from a combination of those three funding sources.
So, uh, I'm suggesting that we put off a decision on the project, so we have the opportunity to invite and hear from both Mr. Wilson and his, where he is with his survey, and Mr. Stevens from the county, to give us more detail on... I mean, I left there with the impression that they had enough money to fund the entire project, but, you know...
It's, it's possible.
That, that remains to be seen. So I would like for us to hear from them, and I would also like for us to give some time, additional time to our attorney, to look into any exposure or any contingent liabilities that the city may have, should we decide to pursue the, uh, this McQueen's proposal to accept the easement, and put it on a calendar for a future date.
I mean, I'm willing to listen to the study when it's published, but I'm not willing to revisit the, um, the purchase versus easement portion of it.
The cut-through is extremely important to, um, our boaters, uh, our residents in, in Punta Gorda. And I would think we should definitely consider all the options that we have for boaters. We keep continually saying we're a waterfront community, we're a boater community, we promote our boating. We should not be doing anything to hinder our options and the opportunities that we might have. Um, I'm willing to, you know, I, I think everything else is off the table at this time, so there's no reason why we shouldn't hear, and hear about the plan, hear about what the, the study says. And I think this is wonderful news, that there's some potential funding.
Uh, Jay in the Punta Gorda Boaters Alliance yesterday kicked off that, that study, that feasibility study, with an initial check of $2,500 to Hans Wilson and Associates. That project, that feasibility study will take about two months. And during that two-month period of time, it'd be a, probably a good idea to continue looking at the various options of, uh, land swaps and, and other versions of that that you folks are doing. After that, after the, the study is done, then Andy, and perhaps a representative from the city, can go to WCIND with a, a project, uh, with a complete feasibility study, and determine which of these... which of these funds are potential funds, what quantity of money is in the funds, and basically, how, how would WCIND, what would be their opinion of allocating funds for this project? So, we have to, we have to take the study to WCIND with the, the county folks that know them, and determine how mu, what funds may be available at that point in time. And then permitting is about a two-year, about a two-year process.
Comments, questions?
I, I feel confused. Are we talking about just the cut-through? We're not talking about the land swap? I mean, that's gone.
Well, it's not, it's not gone, but we're just talking about the, the cut-through right now.
Okay, okay.
I'll be asking for direction on the land swap when we're through talking.
Okay. I mean, I was just, you know, I'm all for the, the cut-through, and I think that's a great idea, and, and I know there's some, I actually had someone send me, there was assistance for marine advisory, you know, boater improvement fund? Is that the same?
That's, yeah, boater improvement fund would not be appropriate for this.
Okay, so, yeah, someone from the county sent that, but I'm all for it, but you guys are doing a study, so what are we deciding?
As soon as you get done talking, I'll ask for specific directions. Right now, there is a three-to-two vote for us to proceed, preparing legal documents for a land swap that the property owner refuses to sign.
I would not be for it without owning the property. And I, I did vote for it, so I would not be for, I mean, the land swap really has nothing to do with the cut-through, in my mind now. It's, it's, that was the only reason.
So, I need direction from council to stop the process for a land swap.
Okay.
I have a question, or if I could, are you talking about owning the land where the cut is going to go through, or the entirety of the property? The, McQueen's property is, consists of 10 acres.
Right.
We are, we were looking, and the original proposal was to have the property where the, just where the cut was going to go through.
Right.
And then, as I mentioned, in an abundance of caution, we decided to ask for the entire 10 acres, which Mr. McQueen is not willing to give to us.
Right.
So, you know, my proposal is to have the attorney look at, if we don't take the, if we don't need the entire property, I don't, I'm not sure what we would need it for, if we have our liabilities covered with the offer to just give us the property for the cut, specifically where the Alligator Creek cut would go.
Tom, let me, let me expand on that a little bit, may help the situation. If, if the city decides for the land swap just for the cut-through area, then Mr. McQueen may decide to, to just set the rest of the property aside for a, a natural area, natural conservation area. And, and that would help in the permitting process, according to Hans Wilson and Andy Stevens yesterday, because during the, the process of getting the permits, you have to go in front of Army Corps of Engineers, for example. And they're gonna look at, at how many feet of mangroves are disturbed. And, and if you could trade off some of the Bucky McQueen land as a, as a natural preserve, it helps with the permitting process.
I just don't see how we can even really go about those details at this time.
No.
It's just way too premature to talk about, how much will he give us, how much will he not? He wants an easement. He, that's my understanding. He does not want to give us portions of the property. That's what the discussion was. So, are we still in, I mean, is anybody changing their mind? Basically, you're being asked to, if you're changing your mind or not, on how you voted previously. Nancy?
I'm not changing my mind. I am not in favor, I wasn't in favor of, of a land swap and using city assets. I feel, I fully support the land, the cut-through. I've had people question me on that. I, I support that. Similarly, I would support in, in, in Burnt Store Isles, we are trying to do something, if we were trying to widen the lock. And I would not be coming to the city and asking the city to do a land swap if we wanted to acquire some of the property to widen the lock. That's a, it's a Burnt Store Isles Canal Advisory Committee issue, it's, it's our district, and it's something we should be spearheading and paying for, and, and I, I feel the same way about Punta Gorda Isles Canal Advisory Committee. I fully applaud the citizen effort to go forward, and I just, and, and to find funding sources, great. And if the city has to be, receive the funds because we're a governmental entity, great. I just am not in favor of swapping the land.
One, I'm sorry, one is not contingent upon the other, from what I understand. If we can talk about Alligator Creek cut exclusive of anything else at this point in time and come to a conclusion on that, we wouldn't have a direction on what we want to do with regard to the cut-through.
But first, first, we need to have a vote taken. If somebody's gonna change their mind, in the, who are in the affirmative? Who are in the affirmative?
I'm going to.
Well, then we need a motion to do something, because right now, we're gonna be preparing legal documents for something that the property owner won't sign. Am I correct?
Well, I wasn't gonna be preparing any documents if he already said no. That would be a waste of time.
Well, but we have a, an affirmative vote to do a, a land swap, and I don't know how to do it.
Jenny?
Do we need a motion?
We don't really, because he didn't agree.
Yes, it's failing to move forward because of the property owner. And if there is no new motion to do anything different, it's dead.
It's dead.
If I, if I could, the, the land swap is still alive. There was a proposal to swap some city-owned property on Taylor Road for some property on Albatross and Bell Harbor, that the Punta Gorda Isles, the board of this Punta Gorda Isles Civic Association recommended, that St. Andrew's Golf Course recommended that we do. They would like, and I support, the idea of having that property in the hands of the city, so the neighbors could take ownership of it potentially, as they did with Nature Park. Beautify the entrance to the area where we live, and, and make it something more pleasing to the community. That's a standalone issue at this point in time. So, if we decide to turn that down, the property will stay the way it is, it'll be mowed every, once the grass reaches 12 inches high, or whatever it is, and it will stay that way and be what it is. We have an opportunity to enhance the appearance of the community, of the community, simply by making that land swap exclusive of anything to do with the cut.
And at that, I would agree. The difficulty I have is that there's not equal value. And if we were to go out on the market and sell the property on Taylor Road, we would be receiving far greater funds for that. And I think, I feel a sense of obligation to our taxpayers, and, and to the, that we, if we're going to sell that, it's of no value to Mr. McQueen. We could purchase it for less than what we would be able to receive the property on Taylor Road for. So, I think it would behoove us to think in terms of if there were extra sales, local option sales tax dollars, and we may wish to acquire it using those kinds of, of funds or something, but to acquire the property outright and, and, and not trade unequal assets. I just don't feel that that's the right thing to do for our taxpayers.
Well, in the local option sale, I've said this before, we talked about pocket parks all over the city. That was never mentioned and never came up. It was never a part of the discussion. So, if there was a need and a want there, it never was brought to the forefront for the committee to even consider.
Carolyn's first.
Carolyn?
The motion that we made as...